Madam Clerk, can you call the roll?
Counsel Kane, Counsel Crowell.
Present.
Counsel DeBona.
Present.
Counsel Harris, Counsel Hughes, Counsel Mahoney.
Present.
Counsel McCarthy.
Present.
Counsel Palmucci, Chairman Liang.
Present.
Five members of the court.
Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived, by those present and are deemed knowledgeable and permissible. The matter before us this evening is Counsel Order 2018-007, Conveyance of Lot A1 to Chestnut Place LLC. I'd like to begin this meeting by opening the floor to public comment. If anybody would like to speak, please give your name and address for the record. And if there are those not wanting to speak would like their opinions known, you may do so on the sign-in sheets at the back of the room.
I'm here to speak against the proposed conveyance of public property for a token $1 payment. While I'm certain the administration has a rationale for asking you all to agree to do so, but the way public hearings are set up, comments are allowed only before the administration might present a rationale. More importantly, however, why wasn't this matter addressed a year ago when this body approved the O'Connell LDA? After all, we're talking about a piece of property equal in size to almost half of the public property then agreed to be sold to O'Connell. That, and let's not forget that the city concurrently agreed to pay good money to buy land from LBC Boston to widen the city's sidewalk easement in front of its pending development on Hancock Street. This makes no sense. Further, this but $1 land sale is on top of arguably upwards of $20 million or more in economic incentives invited, provided to O'Connell, including below-cost, sweetheart, parking lease terms, free use of parking garage infrastructure, an attractive non-bid land purchase price, economic benefit for millions in property to be bought with taxpayer-funded resources to build a considerable green space adjacent to the O'Connell project, as well as both tax breaks and taxes variously avoided, as well as a waiving of the Affordable Housing Trust contribution. In turn, these incentives arguably rebate tacitly to $20 to $30 million or more in property taxes back to O'Connell. And now you want to give them a piece of land worth a chunk of money for free, or basically free? Granted, again, I'm sure that the administration has rationales for all of these incentives in its whole plan, but it's still impossible to see their ultimate effect is only imposing upon other local taxpayers the cost of subsidizing tens of millions of dollars incentives provided to private development. Granted, maybe it will all work out in the end, but what if it doesn't? Thank you for your time.
Anybody else wishing to speak? Okay, at this point, we'll close the public comment portion of this meeting. Now I'd like to call up our solicitor, Jim Timmons, to present. Please.
Good evening, Madam Chair. Shall I just give an overview?
Please.
Okay, very good.
And then we can open up to questions.
Counsel Liang and I have talked about this a bit, but for the benefit of the other members, this is a small parcel of land that I believe if you follow from this map, this plan, I should say, Cottage Place, rather Chestnut Place Row is intended to serve as an access into not only the area where the so-called O'Connell building will be, but also the parking garage and real lot, parcels of land that have not yet been fully assigned out or for which a plan isn't technically lot-by-lot developed. However, access off of Dennis Ryan Parkway needs to be established at this time. It has been part of the original plans that were approved last year. And essentially what happened here is, in looking at this final parcel, it's the 5,217 square foot lot, I had some questions. And one of the things I discussed with Mr. O'Connell's attorney, and we ultimately reached agreement on, was I didn't see the benefit to the city to retaining ownership over this small strip of land. It's solely an access into the area. It's off of our main public way, Dennis Ryan, and the intention of it is to get vehicles that are entering into this area off of Dennis Ryan to cause for a better flow of traffic on Dennis Ryan Parkway. So what we discussed was conveying the land with retained access easements is the legal term. So essentially what's going to happen is, this will be very similar to the street that I actually live on here in Quincy, and any of you are familiar with a private way. The street I live on is not a public way. It's not owned by the city. It's owned privately. However, the public has full access to it. Furnace Brook Golf Course, Faxon Park, folks are always up and down the street I live on. Well, here, Chestnut Place Row will be fully accessible to the public by way of a retained easement, and it will be similar to any other street or, actually, the Mass Turnpike's another example. The Massachusetts Turnpike is privately owned. It's owned by the Mass Turnpike Authority, but it's a way to which the public has access. So it's that concept we're employing here, and by doing it, the city will not have any sort of retained liability for any claims if something should happen here. Where the area was going to be under the control of the property owner at R1, the O'Connell team and that building, and I'm not sure the name of the entity that's going to own the property, but where the property's going to be under that control, where the way is going to be under that property owner's control, I wanted to have them controlling the way as well. I had mentioned when we introduced this that this was similar to what we did at the Wallaston T Station. Well, what happened there with the assistance of Clerk of Committees Jennifer Manning, I learned that we hadn't introduced a council order, but it was the intention originally that we were going to introduce a council order regarding the Wallaston T and the little sidewalk on Newport Ave. But during the course of the negotiation, what we decided to do was the T just took the land by eminent domain, and we agreed to it. But it was the same sort of discussion. It was where the T was going to have control over a small portion of the sidewalk and use a lot of it to develop their new entrance to the Wallaston T Station. So rather than the city retaining ownership over sidewalk that we had no control over and that another entity had actual control over, we had the entity, which is the T, take over the land, and they took the limited portion that they're going to be using for the T entry. So it's simply the same concept being employed here, where we're taking land that the control is going to be vested in another party, and we're conveying it to that party with the retained easements, so whatever public rights we need and public access we need, we have. But we will not have the liability going forward that ownership brings with it. So it's really that, it's that simple conceptually, even though it can be a little complicated in terms of land use. And I do know that Counsel Palmucci has been in touch over the course of the weekend. Last week, last week after he viewed this, he raised the issue of what's called a reverter clause, which those of you may recall from Quincy Medical Center. What he'd like to do is add a provision here that if the development of Lot R1 does not go forward as now intended, then the land will revert back to us. So title to this Chestnut Place Row will remain, will revert back to the city. So that's, I think that's an excellent suggestion, and that provides the type of protection we need so that there'll be no issues going forward should the R1 development not go as we now plan. So I believe appropriate protections are in place, and I believe that the point of this, this was an initiative on my part in discussing it with the lawyers for the developer. So I'm happy to answer any questions a member might have.
Thank you. Just logistically, I just want to touch upon the amendment.
Having a problem hearing you, sorry.
Just, logistically, I would just want to touch upon the amendment that you were mentioning that we're going to add in, the reverter clause in there. Counsel Palmucci is not present at this time, and so if we, again, just logistically, are going to add that in, is that...
I was just discussing that in terms of overview. It can be introduced at any point in time.
Okay.
It's just a motion to amend.
Okay, I know he's on his way, so if we can open it up for questions right now, we can go back to that, and hopefully he'll be here to introduce it by then. So I'd like to open up to questions.
All right. Thank you.
No, I'm sorry. Counsel Mahoney?
Could you just explain, so you're saying that they, you're comparing this to the Wallaston T Station, taking it by eminent domain, is that...
Your microphone on, I'm having trouble hearing, I'm sorry. I beg your pardon.
Could you just repeat your explanation of your, you said that the MBTA took Newport sidewalk by eminent domain. When did that happen? When did that, was that recently, or was it recently that this...
It was last year. I don't know that the taking has gone forward yet, because essentially, we said you can go ahead and do what you wish with that, and we're not going to pursue damages. It's on the Newport Ave side, right opposite Brook Street where all the intersectional, you know, the stop, the red lights are and the crossing walks. There's a sidewalk there that as you travel south to north, it essentially comes to an end, a little further past the entrance to the T. So what they're doing, where it didn't have any functionality beyond entering the T, what they're doing is taking the portion of the sidewalk right near the entrance, because they were going to be installing handicapped access and other, other issues, and they wanted to have permanent easements for the handicap plates and things like that. And so at the time, I thought, why should we own a sidewalk that the T's putting handicapped accessibility equipment on? Why shouldn't they have the liability for all that? So this discussion occurred last spring, and the letter I reviewed that I sent to the T, you know, essentially okaying their proceeding with eminent domain was at that time. It would have been the spring of 2017, but I haven't heard back, and I don't know whether they've gone forward with the taking. I don't know that we've received notice of it.
Is that something that the council would vote on too, or is that something you make unilateral decision for?
No, it wasn't, we're, we're essentially assenting to an eminent domain taking. So in the hierarchy of things, you know, the state can take land, they're not, you know, they're a top priority. This is state agency, a public authority, and so they're taking city land. They have that authority to do so under a special act, and they're exercising that authority, and we just said, we're not going to fight you, so they knew there wouldn't be a court case over it.
So then this comparison...
I was hoping to get that achieved anyway.
Okay, so then this comparison that you have for the lot for, the lot that's before us tonight, for a dollar that we're giving to...
The O'Connell lot, yeah.
Is, is, it's not comparable then, because, then, is it?
Oh, no, it's, it's exactly, they're the same thing. The point of it is to give up the fee and the land. We're not going to retain ownership solely to eliminate any liability issues.
And when they develop this, in this picture, if this, this is to be developed, will that sidewalk, it will go away, right? That's the plan?
Which picture are you looking at? This one? Yeah. It'll be developed as it appears, exactly as it appears. That little island is going to be part of it. And essentially, what's happened is, there's, there are utilities going in there and everything, and they'll all go in first, and then that little strip of red land is, well, it's depicted as red here. The strip that's called Chestnut Place Row will allow for vehicular access, and that's the parcel that we're giving up. So half that little island will go with it, but half of it will remain part of a, a public sidewalk.
And the public sidewalk, the city of Quincy will maintain?
Pardon?
Will they maintain it, or will we maintain it?
There's, there's already an agreement in place relative to the maintenance of all of this, and I'm not sure the details on the sidewalk. I just don't know, but that's all part of the permit that was reviewed and passed last year.
And what about the walkway that goes between the buildings? Is that part of their land, or is that part of what we're, we'd be giving up to?
That's the driveway into the garage. That's owned separately. That's an access easement area. And right now, well, the ownership has nothing to do with O'Connell. Right now, the land's owned by the city.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Real quick question. Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. Through you to Counsel Timmons. I was just reading the, the order, which is 2018-007, and I think to Counsel Mahoney's point, talks about for consideration of a dollar, for the limited purpose of the construction, use, maintenance, repair, and replacement of a way thereon, including accompanying sidewalks, lighting, signage, and other appurtenances, as may be approved by the mayor and the director of planning, to be known as Chestnut Place. So, I mean, that to me sounds like exactly what the redeveloper would be in line to cover in terms of a maintenance schedule. But I'm not an attorney, so I'm, I guess I'm asking that as a question. It's in the order.
Right. And what is the question?
So I think Counsel Mahoney had talked about a maintenance plan. Is the developer going to be responsible for sidewalks and streetscape and lighting? And it sounds like, based on the language in the order, that yes, they will be, because essentially, it's their property with a public easement, correct?
Right, it's all addressed. I'm just not certain how, in particular, it is addressed. That's what I was saying earlier, because I just dealt more with the, the way issue.
Right, but I think it's inherent in the order in terms of how it is addressed.
Well, it does say some of that, yes, you're correct. There's, and I wrote this order excerpting parts from some of the language. I just don't understand it enough, because it's, it gets fairly complex once you go around the corner. And there are going to be future conveyances, there are issues with utility easements and everything, and I'm just not up on all those details, but you're correct. We put enough in the order so that we're going to retain, the planning department retains final control over what goes on out there to make certain that before an occupancy certificate, issues for the building, that we're satisfied that what's going on out front is appropriate and done to municipal standards.
By the redeveloper.
Correct.
Right.
It's all being done by the developer.
I just think...
That was part of the issue as well. They were doing it at their own cost, once we put the utilities in. The city's putting in the infrastructure.
Of course.
And then the developer's doing everything on the surface.
That was always the deal in the URDP anyhow, so...
Correct. That's what's been previously approved.
Right.
But I just wasn't familiar, familiar enough with the details, because I do understand what Counsel Mahoney's getting at.
Do I.
You know, how's the sidewalk going to work and things like that? And I'm not familiar enough with that, but I do know that the developer's going to be maintaining a lot of this and the island area, but just not certain.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions? No, I just have a few questions for you, if you don't mind just staying up here a moment.
Okay.
So just as a follow-up to some of the things that were raised here, when it comes to public spaces in front of businesses right now across the whole city, so like the sidewalk and during examples like snow removal, the businesses are currently responsible for that maintenance, correct?
Can you, what is that now about the sidewalk? Just say the back part of that again.
Yeah, so as it stands right now across the city, the sidewalk space is in front of businesses. The business owners are currently responsible to maintain that, correct?
That, I'm not sure. Can you help on that one?
Sure.
Please, and I beg your pardon, just to get the answer.
No, of course.
I don't mean to usurp the role of the chair.
Sure.
Through you, Madam Chairwoman. I think we were referring to, there is a local ordinance that requires business owners to clear the public sidewalk in front of their businesses. That relates directly to, to snow removal. Those public sidewalks are public sidewalks. Other sorts of maintenance that would be done on those properties are, as any other sidewalk in the city would be, those are public sidewalks. If the sidewalk is to be repaired, that's the city. If there's a tree to be planted on the sidewalk, that's the city. At some point in time in history, there was an ordinance passed requiring business owners to shovel out a certain distance in front of their businesses, and that's not black and white across the board, too. The city of Quincy does a great deal in downtown and along some of the other major arterials in the city, where the city does do snow removal as well.
Okay, so then, when it comes to this language here for the land conveyance, and the developer becomes responsible for the land in front of their building, what's the difference now, aside from just having snow removal responsibilities, what other maintenance is...
Maintenance, if cracks, potholes, general maintenance operations, that would be the responsibility of the developer, not the city.
Okay, and just, thank you, Mr. Walker. Counsel Timmons, another question I had for you also is, you had said that this piece of land was part of the original plan, but you're in front of us here, and you are looking for us to convey it to them as far as the responsibility and the maintenance of the property goes, because they're looking to do this sort of different plan here where it has the drive-through, and that island's in the middle. If the land is not conveyed, what will be done with the piece of property as it stands today?
If the land isn't conveyed, then we'll just retain the ownership. The city will retain the ownership, and it'll be developed in accordance with the current permit.
So it will be developed the same way? So the way it looks will still be moving forward with that look, but we're going to be the ones responsible for it?
Right. Everything would happen, as has already been approved and as has been planned. It's just that we'd own the land instead of the developer. And I just think that, while I've explained why, I think we should not do that.
Were you going to explain, or...
Pardon?
You said you can explain why we shouldn't do that. Were you going to, or...
I just did. I mean, the liability. Why should we retain ownership of land that someone else is going to develop, someone else is going to control, and all we really needed for is access? It's just, it's a, it's a driveway. It's, it's more than a driveway, but it's an entrance into property. So instead, what we're going to do is convey this to the person who has agreed contractually with the city to take control over it. They're going to pay to develop it, once we get the infrastructure in. They're going to pay to maintain it. They're going to actively control it, because it's right in front of their building, and actively maintain it. And what we'll do is write in, you know, easement rights. We'll retain the right to pass over. The term that's used is the right to pass and repass in the manner that all other public ways in the city of Quincy are open to the, the public. That's what we're going to do. So we'll get everything we need out of it. We just won't have the retained liability.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. And just the last thing I'd like to say, and I don't know that you can answer this. I know Bill Gary is the one that's designated in the administration to discuss, you know, downtown matters, but this is one of many steps that we've taken already for this project alone. And I think, for me anyways, it'd be helpful to understand what each vote will then have an effect on, as far as a domino effect goes. You know, we've made these votes, we've been discussing this now for well over a year, and this along with the parking garage, as well as the LBC project. Aside from a demolition, we haven't seen much activity, and we have also not received, I believe, an update as to what's to come. So this vote, you know, is in committee now, and we're discussing it, but after this, then what else? You know, and I think it'd be helpful to know and understand as well, not just for us, but for folks at home, you know, what are we waiting on next? What's to come? When are we going to see things being built? So I don't know if you can speak to that at all, or if you could... Okay. Mr. Walker?
Through you, Madam, Madam Chairman, if I could. Based on discussions relative to the resolution that was approved at the, the last council meeting for an update on the diff, we've been in contact with Counsel President Crowell and Counsel Kane relative to scheduling a full update on the diff, progress within the Hancock lot, and progress in the garage, and the, the parking situation. We have thrown around some dates. I'll, I'll leave it to the body at some point this evening to, to discuss those dates, but we fully anticipate within the next several weeks to be before you with a full update on all things relative to the Hancock lot.
I think if we could just add in there, you had mentioned the diff, the parking situation, so relative to the garage, but if we could also include in there the LBC project, because that is an active project on the lot.
Sure.
And I think that's it for now, specific to the Hancock lot. Thank you. Thank you. Any other questions? Counselor Mahoney?
Jim, to go back, you had said that you're not familiar with, when I was asking the question, that the developer would be in charge of maintaining the sidewalk, and you said there'll be other conveyances that will come before us, and that you weren't familiar with how it all works. Is that, I'm paraphrasing...
Right, yeah, the details.
So we are being asked, or when I'm reading something like this, and it's before the council, and we're making decisions based on information that you provide, if you don't understand the details, how are we supposed to understand the details?
Well, here's how it should work.
Appreciate this.
The council is under an obligation to ask questions.
Absolutely.
And if they're asked in advance, as has been asked, have been asked in advance, I've talked with Counsel Palmucci, Counsel Liang, and I think that's it. You know, then I get the answers and apply them. You asked a question about detail related to the intersection of a sidewalk and an island, and I just don't know it.
Well...
So I don't want to speak out of turn, because that type of detail was not material to what I'm here to present tonight, which is the Chestnut Place Row, 5,217 square foot parcel of land, and I have fully informed the body on that. You're going off that toward the public sidewalk, and, you know, I'm happy to tell you what I do know, but it's not a detailed answer to what I think you were after, which is the intersection of the two.
Well, no, actually, I was, I wanted to know who was maintaining it. I also, this is the map. I didn't get this map in my package. I got this tonight for the first time. I came on Saturday to pick things up. I would assume that I would have the information, but this is the first time I saw this map.
Sorry, what's that again?
I didn't see this. This is the first time I'm seeing this. I only got, in my package, I only got...
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's all I got. So this is much more helpful.
Well, this was sent out on Thursday.
I didn't...
I'm not sure what happened. I don't know what happened, I'm sorry.
I know, I didn't, I printed off the email. I have to print off of the email that I got. But in any case, this is, I didn't have this one page in my PDF when I printed it off. So, and when I reviewed it. So my, my question simply is, is when looking at the red that you showed us here, it's the sidewalk, and that was my question as to who maintains it. And we have plenty of time. It doesn't have to be answered tonight. I don't think we're voting on anything tonight, so I'd like to know that information in more detail, the, the, the more detailed information.
Well, the land that is the subject of what we're talking about is all going to be maintained by the developer under an agreement that has already been approved. So whether we convey it or we don't convey it, the developer's on the hook for the creation of Chestnut Place Row and then the maintenance of it.
Okay.
And that, the entirety of that area.
Can I ask another question?
I may be misunderstood your question and thought you were getting off into the public sidewalk that extends down Dennis Ryan. Okay. Well, this area is, the developer's contractually obligated, and, you know, there's going to be, that'll further be buttoned up in terms of the deed that we use to convey the parcel, if we convey it, or else it'll be enforced through the building inspector during the course of the project.
And for maintenance going forward for that area, when we convey the land and it's owned by the developer, should the developer sell? And we, how does the city enforce to make sure that the area's being taken care of?
In the deed.
Okay. But I've seen it, I've seen that happen with development in the city, throughout the city, where in the deed, the areas, the private ways are supposed to be taken care of, and they fall short of what they're required to do.
I don't know about that. I don't know about that. I mean, I know that bonds get posted and all, you know, there's, I mean, now we're going a little off the rails a bit, but other private developments that have been done, when ways are developed, the developer has to post a bond, and the bond isn't released to the developer until the ways accepted or, you know, reviewed and approved, whatever. But I'm not sure of any particular sites or addresses you might be talking about, but there are processes in place.
And for the record, I did actually reach out to Ms. Liang, Counselor Liang, with questions that I did have, and they did come before, before tonight.
And you did convey questions to me.
I did.
That you said that Counselor Mahoney had raised. Yeah, they came, and those I believe I've addressed. I'm just saying, the sidewalk one, I didn't know the details on. And that's why I didn't know.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Thank you. Counselor Palmucci?
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Timmons.
Good evening, Counselor.
So I, just kind of bringing the public body up to speed, and I know you and I have talked, and you've referenced it, I believe, prior to my arrival. I was concerned when I saw this on the agenda last week, you know, and I was reading the, and I got the impression that it was looking to be passed tonight. I was concerned with the transfer, the permanent transfer of land for a dollar to the developer of the adjacent parcel. And mainly, there was, there didn't seem to be any protection that if the project didn't go forward and the developer, I forget what the term we have under the LDA is. It's not default, but for lack of a better word, defaults on the performance of the LDA, you know, then everything in the LDA is, you know, kaput. They go their separate ways. We go our separate ways onto Plan C, I guess, at this point. However, the ownership of this, you know, little strip of land would still be in that other party's control, and it could be a problem, one for whoever comes next in line. But also, you know, it has some value, probably not any value to anyone who doesn't own the parcel next door, or is developing the parcel next door, but there's some inherent value, and I think we owe to the taxpayers that if, that we shouldn't transfer it in perpetuity if that project doesn't go forward. So I wanted to ensure that it was returned back to the taxpayers if that, if that project doesn't move forward. So I know I raised this with the administration last week. I've spoken to you about it, spoken to attorneys for Chestnut Place, and I think we have an amendment in agreeable form to all parties that I think would solve that problem in terms of if there's a default under the LDA and the project doesn't move forward, would create a reverter clause in the deed to transfer this parcel back to the city. That's your understanding of everything?
Yes. Just, just to be clear on it, the retained easements we are going to have, we're going to protect the public relative to the utility of the site. You're talking about the ownership and everything, and the X factors of what might go on in the future if what we're now planning doesn't happen. And I thought it was an excellent and very helpful suggestion.
So with that being said, I would move to amend Council Order 2018-007 to add the language at the, at the end. The deed to Lot A1 shall contain an option on the part of the city acting through the mayor to cause Title II Lot A1 to revert to the city if the redeveloper has not secured its financing prior to June 30, 2019.
Okay. So we have an amendment on the floor. It does not require a second. So, Madam Clerk, can you call the roll?
Counselor Kane.
Yes.
Counselor Kroll.
Yes.
Counselor DeBona.
Yes.
Counselor, oh geez, sorry, Harris. Counselor Hughes.
Yes.
Counselor Mahoney.
Yes.
Counselor McCarthy.
Yes.
Counselor Palmucci.
Yes.
Chairman Liang.
Yes.
Thank you. And if I may continue, Madam Chairwoman. Jim, one other thing that I had raised with the administration, and I don't think I raised directly with you, is I wouldn't so much call it a concern, but more of a suggestion in the future, whenever we're dealing with things like this, such as the matter that we're dealing with tonight. It would be super helpful for me, and I think probably the other counselors as well, is if we were to receive some sort of communication from the city council's counsel on downtown matters.
Okay.
So from Mr. Shea. So, I mean, it doesn't, we don't have to, you know, whatever we're paying him, three, four hundred bucks an hour, he doesn't have to sit up here for a two-hour meeting for us to ask, are you okay with this? And he says yes, and then, you know, we're spending $2,000. But if, when something's on the agenda related to the downtown, if he could be notified via email and ask, and I don't know if that's up to the council president, or the Chair, or the administration, or whoever, but if he could just weigh in. It could be something as brief as an email back to whoever, or it could be, you know, if required, more thoughtfully articulated in a memo or a letter saying, you know, I've reviewed this and, you know, I don't see a problem, or I do see a problem, or here's something you want to look at. That's just a suggestion. I don't, it would help me anyways feel like this, another set of eyes. And that's not a criticism to you or to the attorneys for Chestnut Place or anyone, but after hearing, when we went through the second, I guess the first and the second kind of realms of development downtown, how much value Mr. Shea brought to the process, kind of from the council perspective, he was our representative in some of the discussions and negotiations there, I think that adds value, and I think he can continue to add value to this body throughout the process by making sure that he weighs in as we move forward. So, that's it. Thank you.
And just comment on that.
Sure, only if you agree, though.
That's certainly appropriate due diligence, and I totally agree with you. The one suggestion I would have is it should, I'll wait till, I'll wait till Mr. Walker's done interrupting.
No, he's always interrupting.
But I, I think that should be initiated by either the president or the Chair of an appropriate committee. Just for the purity, and you understand this as a lawyer, if I'm the one handling the communication with Mr. Shea, I don't know, you know, you might have a concern about your question getting somehow not fully there, or me influencing an answer, whatever. It would be helpful to me if there were a full separation, and I think it's helpful to you. So that's probably something that should either come from the Chair of a particular committee or Mr. President. You can probably determine how you wish to handle those. But Mr. Shea is, I agree with you, he's very helpful. And like in this instance, with the amendment to this particular order, he's provided insight like that before.
Right. Well, that's kind of what made me think of it, is that hopefully this would have been something that he would have thought to add if I hadn't. So, okay, thank you. I, Matt, thank you, Jim. And I'm going to tread lightly, because that's twice we've agreed on something. I feel like a third time, I'm going to, either you or I are going to get-
Probably won't happen.
Madam Chair, perhaps to you or through you to the mayor's representative, at some point, the garage plan is coming back to the council for a vote, correct?
Yep. Mr. Walker? Mr. Walker, if you can clarify?
Yeah, through you, Madam Chairman. I'll check with special counsel to the mayor on that. We are definitely coming back before the body for an update relatively soon. So I'll check on that.
Well, just recall, when we voted approval of the, when the body voted approval of the funding, we were told at that point that there was going to be a second vote required for the actual garage plan design, and we were going to approve that as well. So I just wanted to make sure that, everyone still remember that, because I do, and that it's coming back. Counselor Kroll says he does as well. So I trust Counselor Kroll will make sure that happens. I have nothing else. I know I came in a little bit late, but if it's appropriate at this point, I would move positive recommendation of 2018-007 to the Ordinance Committee.
Okay, that does not require a second. Does anybody else have any other questions? Madam Clerk, if you can call the roll?
Counselor Kane.
Yes.
Counselor Kroll.
Yes.
Counselor DeBona.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor Hughes.
Yes.
Counselor Mahoney.
Yes.
Counselor McCarthy.
Yes.
Counselor Palmucci.
Yes.
Chairman Liang.
Yes. Okay, at this point, I would close the committee, the Ordinance Committee meeting at 7:10.
Hello, good evening, and welcome to the Monday, February 5 meeting of the Quincy City Council. Madam Clerk, if you would please call the roll.
Counselor Kane.
Present.
Counselor DeBona.
Present.
Counselor Harris. Counselor Hughes.
Here.
Counselor Liang.
Present.
Counselor Mahoney.
Present.
Counselor McCarthy.
Present.
Counselor Palmucci.
Present.
President Kroll.
Present.
Eight members, you have a quorum.
Eight members, we have a quorum. I would invite members of the city council to please join, stand and join me in a moment of silence. Please choose as you wish. If you could please turn face the flag with the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, councilors. Madam Clerk, if you please could read into the record the open meeting law.
Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting, or may transmit, transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present and are deemed acknowledged impermissible.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. If you could, please, the first item on this evening's agenda.
Number one, 2018-027, ordinance amending City of Quincy zoning ordinance, adding section six-
Motion to waive the reading by the Chairwoman of the Ordinance Committee, Counselor Liang.
Mr. President, I'd like to refer this to ordinance and environmental and public health committees, please.
Motion made by Counselor Liang to refer to ordinance, and I'm sorry, what was the other one?
Environmental and public health.
Environmental and public health. All those in favor?
Aye.
Post. I just have it. Next item on the agenda?
Number two, 2018-028, order accepting the sales tax provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 64 N marijuana tax as amended.
Motion to waive the reading made by Counselor Liang, and with that, I'd like to recognize Counselor Liang.
Thank you. I'd like to also refer this to ordinance and environment and public health, please.
Do referral to both ordinance and environmental and public health. All those in favor?
Aye.
Post. I just have it. Next item on the agenda, please.
Number three, 2018-029, order of nomination in parks and recreation board appointments.
Thank you. This is a order, basically, the city council has the authorization to appoint two city council reps, if you will, to serve on the City of Quincy's Park and Recreation Board. We went through this process last year. The two aforementioned gentlemen, who I'll recognize, councilors to put forward the motion, came in and began their service, I believe it was last year, on this board. But with that, I would recognize Counselor Hughes, please.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I would like to place in nomination the name of Thomas Lester for re-nomination, reappointment to the park and rec board. Mr. Lester is Award V resident who has served his country, served his community, and has a great love for civic responsibility and for making sure that the parks and the children of Quincy have safe places to play and to participate in sports. So I would place into nomination the name of Thomas Lester. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Hughes. Motion made to place into nomination the name of Tom Lester. Motion made seconded by Counselor DeBona. Any discussion on the motion? If you could, when the Madam Clerk calls the roll, please say into the record, Thomas Lester. Madam Clerk?
Counselor Kane.
Thomas Lester.
Counselor DeBona.
Thomas Lester.
Counselor Hughes.
Thomas Lester.
Counselor Liang.
Thomas Lester.
Counselor Mahoney.
Thomas Lester.
Counselor McCarthy.
Thomas Lester.
Counselor Palmucci.
Thomas Lester.
President Kroll.
Thomas Lester.
Eight members.
Eight members voting in the affirmative. The next appointment, I'd like to recognize Counselor DeBona.
Thank you, President Kroll. I'd like to make a motion to put in the nomination for Quincy Park and Recreation Board Kevin Isdale. Kevin has been very involved with the Quincy youth soccer around the City of Quincy for some years now. A person that's going to be involved with the children as well as being on these different fields throughout the City of Quincy. I call these people a field rep. So he's going to be able to give the knowledge and the background for some of these parks and recreation that we use. I'd like to put that in the form of a motion for Kevin Isdale.
Nomination put in the form of a motion by Counselor DeBona for Kevin Isdale, seconded by Counselor McCarthy. Please, when the clerk calls the roll, to respond with Kevin Isdale. Madam Clerk, on the motion. Counselor Palmucci?
Thank you. Mr. Isdale, he's a board four resident, and I can certainly speak to his dedication to the role, first of all, of a park and rec board member, but also to youth sports programs. In my capacity as a city councillor, I've had many a conversation with him about conditions of our fields, things going on in the area. And I think this would be his second term. I fully support Mr. Isdale's nomination, and I trust and expect he will do, continue to do a fantastic job on the park and rec, rec board. Thank you.
Thank you, counsel. Any further discussion on the nomination? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, if you please call the roll.
Counselor Kane.
Kevin Isdale.
Counselor DeBona.
Kevin Isdale.
Counselor Hughes.
Kevin Isdale.
Counselor Liang.
Kevin Isdale.
Counselor Mahoney.
Kevin Isdale.
Counselor McCarthy.
Kevin Isdale.
Counselor Palmucci.
Kevin Isdale.
President Kroll.
Kevin Isdale.
Eight members.
Eight members voting in the affirmative. The next appointment actually derives out of the school committee, and I apologize for that in the beginning, but I'd like to recognize Counselor Kane.
Thank you, Mr. President. Tonight, I am hoping to nominate Paul Brigoli, who needs no introduction. He is a longtime fixture across the City of Quincy, multiple year member of the school committee, longtime coach across sports within the school system. So I have no doubt that he would be a welcomed addition, Award V resident also. I know Counselor Hughes would have some things nice to say about him as well, and the neighbor. So I hereby recommend to the council, Paul Brigoli, to the Quincy Park and Recreation Board.
Thank you, Counselor Kane. Motion made by Counselor Kane, seconded by Counselor McCarthy. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, if you could please respond with Paul Brigoli. Madam Clerk?
Counselor Kane.
Paul Brigoli.
Counselor DeBona.
Paul Brigoli.
Counselor Hughes.
Paul Brigoli.
Counselor Liang.
Paul Brigoli.
Counselor Mahoney. Counselor McCarthy.
Paul Brigoli.
Counselor Palmucci.
Paul Brigoli.
President Kroll.
Paul Brigoli.
Eight members.
Eight members voting in the affirmative. Also, Madam Clerk, if you'd be so kind to just send these folks a letter of acknowledgement to their reappointment as the city council's representative on the park and rec board, would be extremely appreciated.
Certainly.
And with that, the next item on the agenda? Please?
Number four, 2018-030, resolve update on adoption of the age-friendly model, planning model.
With the reading. With that, Madam Clerk, I know many councilors that are sitting around the well here this evening are familiar with this discussion that, you know, we've had for quite some time. I'm looking for more of a definitive update as to where the application process is for the City of Quincy going forward and seeking its age-friendly slash livable communities designation. I would recognize the mayor's representative, Mr. Walker, if you could, because I know that we've had a brief conversation on this. Fill some folks in, please.
Sure. Through you, Mr. President. As you mentioned, you had a direct conversation with the mayor relative to this within the last couple of weeks, and he's committed the resources to move this along. There are a couple of steps within this process, and I think in relative short order, working with you, counsel, who's been so persistent on this issue, that we should be able to move forward in relatively near term and have a more formal discussion in, in the very near future.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. And with that, just because I know, you know, Counselor Mahoney and Counselor McCarthy are just joining us, I took down a couple of notes, just in terms of, you know, what this designation is- of, you know, what this designation is, and I think more importantly, what it, what it isn't. And what it isn't is a declaration of, you know, this is a retirement village. What it is, is, you know, membership means is that a community's elected leadership has made the commitment to actively work toward making their town, city, or county a great place for people of all ages. Age-friendly communities are by their nature inclusive and considerate of the perspective of all residents of ages, of all ages, and all persuasions. Age-friendly communities encourage and benefit from diverse citizen engagement by encouraging signatories to engage residents in a process to identify the community's needs, and develop and implement an action plan to address those needs. Really, what it does is it looks at eight areas. They call them the domains of livability, in its respect and social inclusion, civic participation and engagement, community and health services, outdoor spaces, buildings, transportation, housing, and social participation. So, I think really what this does, and, you know, I spoke with members of AARP within the last couple of days. We'll be scheduling a, you know, a conference call just to talk about who, because there are multiple stakeholders involved with actually getting this process off the ground, who those stakeholders are, but I think more importantly, staying committed to an agenda, and really what the goal here is, you know, as we continue to revitalize as a city, and essentially take things apart and put them back together, making sure that we as a community are talking, not only amongst ourselves, but with other folks who have been through similar changes. And when we put items back together, we're putting them back together in a manner that's, you know, accommodating to all walks of life, giving, in all, you know, respective seasons of life. So, again, it's a conversation that's taken place up here for quite some time, and I'll look forward to advancing the ball down the court. But with that, I'd put a motion on the floor to approve. I don't know if anyone wants to talk or ask questions. Counselor Liang? Motion made by myself, seconded by Counselor Liang. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none. Counselor DeBona?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just to elaborate just a little bit more on what you're talking about, I know you put this into motion last year with a resolution, and we're obviously gonna move on this, but I think this is important for, basically, the blueprint for the future for the community needs. You talked about all the different categories of interest, and I think this is something that we need to kind of move forward and have, get the discussion from the administration. So, looking forward to this discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, counsel. Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, if you would please call the roll.
Counselor Kane.
Yes.
Counselor DeBona.
Yes.
Counselor Hughes.
Yes.
Counselor Liang. Counselor Mahoney.
Yes.
Counselor McCarthy.
Yes.
Counselor Palmucci. President Crowell.
Yes.
Eight members.
Eight members voting in the affirmative. The resolution passes. Next item on the agenda, please, Madam Clerk?
Would you like this put into a committee?
No, that's good.
Number five, 2018-031, a gift for fifty dollars from Ann Demone to the Quincy Fire Department.
Chair recognizes the finance chair, Counselor Kane.
Motion to, to accept the gift and to send a note of thanks, please.
Motion made by Counselor Kane, seconded by Counselor DeBona. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Kane.
Yes.
Counselor DeBona.
Yes.
Counselor Hughes.
Yes.
Counselor Liang.
Yes.
Counselor Mahoney.
Yes.
Counselor McCarthy.
Yes.
Counselor Palmucci. President Crowell.
Yes.
Eight members.
Eight members voting in the affirmative. The gift is accepted. Next item on the agenda, please.
Number six, 2018-032, a gift for two hundred dollars.
Motion to waive the reading, please.
Motion made by Counselor Kane to waive the reading.
On the motion, please, motion to accept the gift and to send a note of thanks.
Motion made by Counselor Kane, seconded by Counselor DeBona. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, if you please call the roll.
Counselor Kane.
Yes.
Counselor DeBona.
Yes.
Counselor Hughes.
Yes.
Counselor Liang.
Yes.
Counselor Mahoney.
Yes.
Counselor McCarthy.
Yes.
Counselor Palmucci.
Yes.
President Crowell.
Yes. Eight members voting in the affirmative. The gift is accepted. Next item on the agenda, please.
That concludes tonight's agenda.
Okay. We need a approval of previous meeting minutes from January 22nd. So, move by Counselor Hughes. Yeah. All those in favor?
Aye.
Close, eyes have it. Communications and reports from the mayor of the city officers and city boards. Okay, seeing none. Unfinished business in preceding meeting. Seeing none. Reports committees. Chair recognizes the chair of ordinance, Counselor Liang.
Thank you, Mr. President. Tonight, the ordinance committee had met regarding Council Order 2018-007 for the order of the conveyance of Lot A1 to Chestnut Place LLC, and there is a positive recommendation from committee.
Positive recommendation made by Counselor Liang, seconded by, by Counselor Palmucci. Any discussion? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, if you would please call the roll.
Counselor Kane.
Yes.
Counselor DeBona.
Yes.
Counselor Hughes.
Yes.
Counselor Liang.
Yes.
Counselor Mahoney.
No.
Counselor McCarthy.
Yes.
Counselor Palmucci.
Yes.
President Crowell.
Yes.
Seven members.
Seven members voting in the affirmative. The order passes. Everyone's favorite, traffic and parking.
Yes, okay, so we've got a couple here tonight, and these were advertised on January 25th in the Quincy Sun. So, the first is 2018-022, to add two-hour parking on both sides of Lincoln Avenue, Newport Avenue, to Winthrop Avenue, and there's a positive recommendation.
Motion made by Counselor Liang, seconded by Counselor DeBona. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none. Madam Clerk?
Counselor Kane.
Yes.
Counselor DeBona.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor Hughes.
Yes.
Counselor Liang.
Yes.
Counselor Mahoney.
Yes.
Counselor McCarthy.
Yes.
Counselor Palmucci.
Yes.
President Crowell.
Yes.
Eight members.
Eight members voting in the affirmative.
Okay, next, we've got 2018-023, add no parking at 378 Belmont Street, and a positive recommendation.
Positive recommendation, motion approved by Counselor Liang, seconded by Counselor DeBona. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none. Madam Clerk?
Counselor Kane.
Yes.
Counselor DeBona.
Yes.
Counselor Hughes.
Yes.
Counselor Liang.
Yes.
Counselor Mahoney.
Yes.
Counselor McCarthy.
Yes.
Counselor Palmucci.
Yes.
President Crowell.
Yes.
Eight members.
Eight members voting in the affirmative.
Okay, we've got 2018-024, to add handicap parking at a load, I'm sorry, handicap parking slash loading zone at 119 Bromfield Street, and a positive recommendation.
Motion approved by Counselor Liang, seconded by Counselor DeBona. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none. Madam Clerk?
Counselor Kane.
Yes.
Counselor DeBona.
Yes.
Counselor Hughes.
Yes.
Counselor Liang.
Yes.
Counselor Mahoney.
Yes.
Counselor McCarthy.
Yes.
Counselor Palmucci.
Yes.
President Crowell.
Yes.
Eight members.
Eight members voting in the affirmative.
Okay, we've got 2018-025, to add handicap parking at 63 Davis Street, I remove positive recommendation.
Motion approved by Counselor Liang, seconded by Counselor DeBona. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none. Madam Clerk?
Counselor Kane.
Yes.
Counselor DeBona.
Yes.
Counselor Hughes.
Yes.
Counselor Liang.
Yes.
Counselor Mahoney.
Yes.
Counselor McCarthy.
Yes.
Counselor Palmucci.
Yes.
President Crowell.
Yes.
Eight members.
Eight members voting in the affirmative.
All right, last one, 2018-026, to add handicap parking at 180 Billings Road, I move positive recommendation.
Motion approved by Counselor Liang, seconded by Counselor DeBona. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none. Madam Clerk?
Counselor Kane.
Yes.
Counselor DeBona.
Yes.
Counselor Hughes.
Yes.
Counselor Liang.
Yes.
Counselor Mahoney.
Yes.
Counselor McCarthy.
Yes.
Counselor Palmucci.
Yes.
President Crowell.
Yes.
Eight members.
Eight members. Yosa, counsel?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other reports from committees? Probably not at this point. Presentations of petitions, memorials, and remonstrances. Counselor Hughes?
I'd just like to offer our condolences, and keep in our thoughts, Maureen Halsen, our former assistant city clerk, she lost her mother this week, and again, just to keep her and her family in our prayers and in our thoughts, and, you know, just honor her mother's great legacy, which many, many children in Maureen's family, and obviously, Maureen was an enormous help to all of us, starting out and coming in, but just for those folks.
Thank you, counsel.
Thank you.
Any other petitions, memorials, or remonstrances? Counselor Liang?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to take a moment to remind everyone that the Lunar New Year is coming up. It's going to be on Friday, February 16th, and the city of Quincy's going to be celebrating by way of Cory's festival that they have every year. It's going to be this Sunday, from noon to five, and it's a great celebration. There's a lot of history, a lot of culture that's going to be shown there, and I know my colleagues are, you know, always there to support as well, and so I'd like to invite folks at home to stop by. Anytime between noon and five, there's going to be, again, you know, shows, festivities, performances, and great food all day. So, I hope everyone will come and celebrate the New Year with me. Thank you.
Thank you, counsel. Motions, orders, and resolutions. Counselor Palmucci.
Trying to figure out where the most appropriate time to bring this up is, probably would have been under, I was trying to figure out if I was chairman of the rules committee or not, and I don't recall, but I just wanted to highlight, I believe the rules that we were given tonight, 2018-19, is missing a rule that we changed four years ago, relative to a present vote, and how a present vote should be counted. I think it's Rule 13, which was amended some time ago, that suggested something to effect that a present vote should not be counted as a vote for the purposes of calculating a majority. So, perhaps if the clerk and clerk of committees could look into that, I believe, it wasn't in the last one, either, the last city council rules, and when I raised it then, it was, well, we already printed them, so we'll just, we'll just know that it's changed, and then, but at a certain point, when we stop printing it, it's like the rule no longer exists. So, if we could check that and maybe report back to us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yosa, counsel?
Yep.
Thank you. Scheduling of committee hearings, and Counselor Kane?
I'd like to propose scheduling our first finance committee meeting of the year, so that we can have a discussion on the resolution for seeking an update on the DIF fund, and I'd like to propose that on Monday night, before our next council meeting, February 26th, at 6:30 PM.
6:30?
6:30, please.
Yes, 6:30, finance. Thank you, counsel. Counselor Palmucci, you also have a placeholder on here for the 21st oversight?
Yes.
Okay, gotcha.
Yes, the Oversight Committee will be meeting on Wednesday, February 21st, 2018,[1710.32]